It's good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
I was told I had to see you.
Yeah.
Good to see you guys.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
So that's why.
Okay. Slow growing and last forever.
I don't know. Well, if it does, we'll break plastic. If the deer give it.
Yeah. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna wait.
Produces acorns, so it's always, it's always giving, you can say that. Because it gives acorns.
So I know that this will be, is it possible just to step out?
Rents and ground squares.
Oh, yes, anytime you want to leave.
Good to know that.
Was Second City funny?
Yeah.
We got it.
It was funnier.
Well?
I laughed more at Second City. I will say, the play last night was cool.
I will guard.
It was very dope. I really, I've made.
Where is the chief?
So we're about like.
Well.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are live. Thank you for being here. This is our regularly scheduled work session, and we'll call it to order at this time. So a couple of comments on the lyric, just so you're aware. The decision's already been made that in the city will help with a scissor lift, and we will, those other cans that were in that room that have red bulbs, we will change those out into white so that we can brighten that room up better. And the decision has also already been made to put audio in there because I think we would just have a huge problem if we have a big crowd trying to hear somebody talking like we, especially Steve and I, would have a hard time hearing. So, so those decisions have been made, and that should be ready to roll by the time we get fired up in June. So, all right, let's.
Was that an age discrimination comment?
No, sir. No, I, you'll notice I lumped myself in there too. We just don't hear as well.
I know.
So, it'll just be better, and we can tie into their system actually, which will, it'll just make it nice and more clear. So with that said, let's move on. Meeting follow-up, one cent, community projects follow-up, sir. And I will make note that the Salvation Army is in the room. We will not allow you to speak to it, sir. Unfortunately, we didn't allow anyone else, so but you're welcome to sit and watch the process if you choose. So, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, councilors. This really is a follow-up from the conversation that you had on this matter. Was it two weeks ago or a week ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, okay, thank you. Wherein, we have a couple proposals.
Excuse me, we did discuss it last week, I'm sorry.
Last week, okay.
But there were only five of us here, so we wanted to wait.
That's right. That's exactly right. The proposals that need your clarification, if you will, in terms of what direction you want to go, is the Salvation Army's proposal, as well as a proposal from the Youth Crisis Center, who suggested that their proposal was potentially misread as it relates to the deliberations and ostensibly the decision council rendered in that regard. So tonight's purpose is really just to determine where you want to go with those proposals and/or any other questions that you might have, so we can tie that up and move it forward in formal deliberation.
So with that said, I challenge those that were here, and I don't know if the rest of you were able to get the homework or not, we had eighty-seven thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars roughly that we had left over that we had attached to the library, that we have at our disposal. And then the homework was to ask you to go back through the awards we had given and maybe find some extra funding, and then decide what to do with that funding. The Salvation Army's application was submitted on time. It was a, an unfortunate thing where it was put in a junk folder, and so it was not considered that evening. So we do have that one on the table to consider. And then we also have the, the ask from the Youth Crisis Center, which was initially, what we thought was a hundred thousand, which we fully funded, was unfortunately four hundred thousand, it was a hundred thousand a year. I spoke with their director yesterday, excuse me, today, and he said they could literally get by with an ask of two, I think you guys saw the email, two sixty-nine, whatever it was, to get them by. They are very involved in what goes on with our police department and our youth, so it would probably behoove us to try to find that money if it's possible. So we have those two entities to discuss, figure out where the money comes from, how much we'd like to give to each, that's where we're at. We didn't allocate a lot of time for this, we were hoping homework got done, so I'll open up the floor for whomeva. Mr. Gamroth.
Thanks, Bruce. I want to try to keep this fair, so I would welcome any feedback to this proposal, but I would be curious to hear from the chief in regards to the relationship our police department has with the Youth Crisis Center. Just, you know, no positive or negative words one way or another, I'm just curious how your department works with the Youth Crisis Center, if at all.
Chief, please.
Mayor, council, we have limited opportunities in which to deal with juveniles. We, it takes a small miracle to incarcerate a juvenile, so those that don't warrant that, that are not safe. I have limited options, and so the Youth Crisis Center is my, my main resource for that. That being said, I'm not available, I'm not able to comment on the day-to-day working relationship, they are a valued resource for us because of our limited options that we have.
Thank you, chief. So, I mean, all transparency on the board, we need to find that money for them. There, I mean, this is our council goal, this is right in line with what we're trying to do as a council. This is the only, pretty much, outlet we've got for these youth outside of incarceration. And even then, like the chief said, we have a really hard time getting them incarcerated, so go ahead, Mr. Ray.
So I'm playing catch-up, obviously, I was gone last week, and so to not belabor the conversation, I guess, tell us, what we have, do we have, do we have any money left?
No.
We're just trying to find.
Right. But however, the library we had awarded, just to refresh you, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then we had eighty-seven thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars left at the end of the night, and we decided to throw that towards the library to help with the security part of things. The two forty was to cover their books, if I remember correctly, and, and their material. So taking the eighty-seven five fourteen back from them is not a stretch, it's not a, it's not a bad way to go. Eighty-seven five fourteen, I believe, is that right?
Yep.
Man, what a memory. So, so we do have that, because that was an afterthought, but we've got a total ask of, what's the Salvation Army asking for?
Two eighty.
Two eighty? So we have a total ask left on the board of two eighty and two seventy roughly. So that's five fifty, and we have eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Is the two seventy less the hundred thousand dollars that we already allocated?
I beg your pardon?
Did you, did you subtract the hundred thousand dollars?
I did not. I did not.
You're right.
Yeah, thank you for that. So that, that brings us down to four.
Already found a hundred thousand dollars.
You're awesome. You are awesome. That's why you're a good businesswoman. So we're down to four fifty now, with eighty-seven thousand dollars, so if we take that off of that, we're down to three twenty-three. Do you have something?
No, other than just, we heard from the chief about the limited options available, the landscape might have changed, but the last I knew, because I've worked in residential adolescent treatment, WBI, last I checked, was not. I think they had residential for just girls, no boys, and then the counseling center, which used to have a residential adolescent program, last I checked, does not. So I know the resources that were available when I was working in that industry, I mean, Youth Crisis Center is probably like the only place.
Right. And then talking to Dave today, and I, forgive me for calling him by his first name, but that's what I remember, I, I keep forgetting his last name, Hell?
Holshizer.
Holshizer, thank you. He did say that the two sixty-nine or the two seventy, whatever it was, would suffice, they could get by with it. So in my opinion, we need to find that for them. So did anybody come up with any cuts from anywhere else in the, in the program that we dealt out? Randy?
How popular.
Pardon me?
Did we get the financials from CFC? That fifty thousand was contingent upon them giving us.
There were about three or four of them that were contingent on that?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know if we received any of them?
No, no, we have not done that yet. So I waited to reach out to anybody until you finalized the numbers, because I wasn't sure if you were going to be removing, so I didn't want to say, they've awarded you fifty if you turn this in, so I was waiting for this process. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It's okay. It's, it's all right. It would have been nice to know, but I mean, that is what it is. So, did anybody find any cuts anywhere? I will tell you, truthfully, the BMX, we jumped at that because, and I think we gave them two hundred thousand dollars.
One fifty.
One fifty? And we really jumped at that because it, it kind of fulfilled a city prophecy, if you will, by paving a lot, which is required within the city limits and that city property. However, I will tell you, I don't know that that aligns with council goals. I, albeit it's good for us, you know, to have our own lots paved and we're requiring that within the city limits, I don't know that that, that aligns with our goals. So for me, that was the one I found that I felt. was the one I found, that I felt like it, it wouldn't hurt my feelings to pull that and put it somewhere else. Lisa?
I guess, since we're having to try to find money, and then we've got three or four of them that's contingent, because they didn't supply all of that, I think at this point, then we should consider just cutting those who didn't supply all the information.
And I, I'm inclined to agree with you.
And then utilize what money that there is of it.
I am absolutely inclined to agree with you, simply because although the application process was difficult in some ways, not in that way.
Right.
That was very clearly defined about what we were wanting, and they chose not to supply those. Go ahead, Jenna.
So, then, to counter this, and I'm going to say the same thing about the Crisis Center, the Youth Crisis Center too. They knew how to fill out the application. It's easily to look at that, too, as misunderstanding. So, that opens the door, in my eyes, for other people who didn't get what they wanted, or misread, or didn't do their numbers correctly, to have them coming in.
That's a fair point. So, now what it comes down to is weighing what fits best within our community and our council goals. So, can you remind me what the four or three were that we were requiring additional documentation on, and the amounts that we had offered to give them? Ray, you have something? Go ahead, Flora, if you got it first, before I say something.
So, we have Central Welling Counseling Center, Casper Softwood-
How much?
Oh, no, that's, sorry. The Central Welling Counseling Center received forty. That was one that you said, you need financial information first. And that one, we do have that now.
We do have their financials.
The Casper Family Connections.
How much?
It was fifty.
Fifty?
So, just those two. The other ones were just restricted as to what they could spend.
Okay.
Just don't like having to take money away from-
Well, we're not taking anything away. We haven't given any yet. So, keep that in mind. It's not like we're pulling it back from them. We haven't awarded a dime yet.
Right.
So, when I, when I first talked to YCC, and they, because they approached me about it, because it's in the letter, so in the application, it, it did say four years, over a hundred thousand over four, a hundred thousand per year for four years. So, I, I understand that, that when we're making the suggestion that it's their fault, I would suggest that they had put it in there, and it must have been, it was either misread or something, and, but they put a hundred thousand per four years, is what I think it said. A hundred thousand per four years, if I remember. And so, I can see how maybe staff maybe looked at it and said, oh, this is only a hundred thousand. So, honest, it was, it's an honest mistake, and, and no one is to blame for it, in, in any stretch of imagination. And, and I don't even think for the people that missed their financials, we should hold them to, to that. The problem with it is that, if, if we looked at it, when we talked about it two weeks ago, and we said, we, we, we want to see the financials, and, and if we can get the financials, then we'll do that, and we'll move forward. But if we're going to backtrack on saying that, and without getting those financials, I think that's not in good faith, when we said that, two weeks ago. We had said that we were going to look at that, and wait for those financials to come back, and now we're going to backtrack and say, we're not going to do that. I think that's in bad faith on, on the city's part.
That's a fair point.
If you want my opinion. And I, and I don't think that's, that would look good on our, on ours. So, those are my two, my two things about backtracking on those two that didn't bring the, didn't have the financials, and then Dave, and his request. Because when he called me, I looked at it, and I wanted to make sure, because I didn't want to get myself into it. And that's when I called, I did, I called Carter, and I said, hey, I think there might be a bit of a mistake here. On nobody's, nobody's part. It just, I think, just ended up happening. So, that's kind of where we're at, and, and when it comes to YCC. And I didn't know about Salvation Army until I got back from my trip from St. Louis, so.
And you're aware what happened there?
Yeah, yep.
Yes, I think, can I, I think that, well, I was under the impression that the application or the grant process wasn't filled out correctly. Ended up asking, requesting the four. Not just, and I thought it just said a hundred, and then they changed it, like, oops, but we looked.
I think what happened, I think what happened was, is it wasn't clear. So, I think the misinterpretation is, is that it wasn't clear for staff, where it said, you know, where I think he broke, I don't know if they broke it down the way that it could have been completely clear, in that sense. And I think that's fair, don't you, Flora?
Yeah, there was a sheet that says budget detail, and they're supposed to break down how much, and he broke down what the items were, and then-
For just one-
Total budget requested, and it said a hundred thousand.
Yep.
And there's nothing on that sheet that said per year, or times four, or anything on there. It was within another area of the-
It's on the front page of the application. In the bottom corner, it says a hundred thousand per year for four years.
But he didn't. What would happen was, and then it wasn't broken down-
On the budget detail.
On the budget sheet. So, that's, that was where it was, it's really nobody's fault, and if you want to be fair. And so, that's kind of where we ended up on that, so.
Okay, so, we're already twenty minutes into this, into what we allotted for ten minutes. Not, it doesn't matter if we have to sit here for two hours. I'm okay with it, because I want to get it right. But we are still in a situation where we have two entities that are needing money, and we have no money. So, we've got to find a place to pull some from, or leave it where it is. So, I need, I need some suggestions, some discussion. Go ahead.
I'll start discussion. So, I'm not in favor of taking the security issues away for the monies that were going to be applied to the security over at the library, because they keep track of what is happening over there. And when they do nine-one-one calls, like, I have incidents, like, they have fifty-two nine-one-one calls since July of last year. Trespassing, drugs, child endangerment, panhandling, sexual assault, threats to the staff. I mean, there's a lot of them there. So, there's obviously a huge issue for that, but I don't know how, I mean, if they pay, they're open, like, sixty hours a week. And so, if they have to staff that with security, that's not going to be one guy, and that's where that money was going towards. Do you see where I'm going with this?
I do. So, let me, let me play-
What do you do with, how does that alleviate?
Well, let me do the other side of this for you. And here's an issue I have. We are, that is a county-run institution, the public library. Why is the city giving them two hundred and forty thousand dollars to buy books? Hold on a minute. Why are we giving them eighty-seven thousand dollars for security, when it is a county-run institution? We don't go to the county. Our city, city-owned and operated businesses don't go to the county and ask for money like that. They can give eight hundred thousand dollars to an MRG, and this is going to create a can of worms, I get it. But we can give eight hundred thousand dollars to keep air service flying into Casper, but, but they can't take care of the library to where it's straining us to have to do it. That's my problem with giving the additional money to the library. We've already given them a quarter of a million dollars into a, into a county-run business. It just-
Can I-
It's an issue for me.
So, where that one cent money goes towards is materials and everything that they go out. They have circulation. I mean, they service huge numbers of the population.
And they get one cent money from the county also.
Which is used for operations. They have a lot of money that pays for the operations that comes out of the county money.
I, I don't know their budget, but I know they are, they also give money from the county, not just one cent money.
That goes, not to materials, but it goes towards-
I don't know. I haven't seen their budget.
Well, it's on the form. We went over this, like, when we additionally did this. So, I get what you're saying, but it's also a need, and the-
Right, but so is the Youth Crisis Center. So is the Salvation Army. So is, so is-
Then, yeah, I get it.
Everything else. I mean, they got a quarter of them. They got one of the biggest asks that we gave out. Two hundred and forty thousand dollars. They got more, more than most.
Look at all the people they serve. They deserve it.
So does everybody else.
I see that. I understand your argument. I'm just saying that there, it's a lot of staff endangerment, kids don't want to go to, it's not benefiting the city when you have the problems that we have and nine-one-one being called there. It's a turnoff for people going. My son stopped wanting to go to the library because of all the hanging around that went on there. I mean, so, and there's a lot of other people like me that do that. So, I understand what you're saying, but we need supplies and materials, too. Children have to learn. And there's lots of other funding, just like the library, for food.
Randy?
Okay, we'll go back to being unpopular. So, if we look just at goals, Science Zone was one we had discussed that we were iffy about. We gave them a hundred thousand. We could whittle a little bit there.
Who was that?
The Science.
Oh, Science Zone.
Steve?
If you turn around and take the eighty-seven five fourteen away from the library, the hundred thousand we've already given them, then all they need is another eighty-one thousand dollars. And so, if you took an across-the-board cut of three point six-six percent from everybody that's there, that will make up that difference.
Seems fair to me. Ray?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, not, I wasn't prepared to the numbers, but, I mean, the only other thing that comes to my mind is, if we're going to make it, there's going to have to be across-the-board, where everybody, everybody gets a minimum cut.
And here, again, I was not here for any of the initial discussions. So, that's where I was taking this as what all of you had decided on earlier, and realizing that at the end, with all of your other allocations, you had wound up with an extra eighty-seven five fourteen. So, you kind of said, okay, let's give that to the library. Well, if you wouldn't have had that, the library wouldn't have had it to begin with. So, that's why I said, take that out. And then, that was where I was just sitting here figuring, was so that people in the audience don't think I was playing. That's my calculator. So, that's what I had come up with, is that it was six, three point six-six percent across the board, and that would make up the other eighty-one thousand dollars. Which then, everybody is fair with what everybody had decided initially, except for that eighty-seven five fourteen.
So, what if we did this? What if we did, if we, if we pulled, thank you, if we pulled the five percent, or if we pulled the eighty-seven from the library, and they still get their two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which I'm comfortable with, and then we do a five percent cut across the board? That frees up another hundred and twelve five eighty. That gives us a hundred ninety-four thousand and forty-one dollars, of which, we need to give a hundred thousand to Youth Crisis Center to get them where they need to be. That would leave us-
If we give them the eighty-seven, all they need is another eighty-one, to get to the two sixty-nine.
What I did is I took a five percent cut across the board of the two point two-five, which gave us a hundred and twelve five eighty. I added the eighty-seven five fourteen back into it. That gives us a hundred ninety-four thousand, forty-one dollars. Now, if we give, the Youth Crisis Center would need another hundred and what? Sixty-nine?
Something like that.
Right? I just don't know if we're going to get that close. Roughly, that would leave us, that would leave us twenty-five thousand dollars, roughly.
So, you're saying that, sorry, are you saying then that the, I'm trying to understand this. When you said five across, the five percent across the board, and then, so then the Crisis, Youth Crisis Center is getting four hundred thousand?
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's where I'm lost.
I, I screwed up on my number.
Okay.
I didn't. I took the two point two-five million that we had. If you take five percent of that, it's a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. So, if you take that, and the eighty-seven thousand five fourteen, and you add those together, it gives you a hundred ninety-four thousand forty-one dollars. We could give the hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to the Youth Crisis Center, which would get them to the two sixty-nine they needed. And that would leave you twenty-five thousand dollars you could give to the Salvation Army, and we're done. Sir?
Thanks, Bruce. Sorry to be a distraction. That's a fine plan. I was curious, though, I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Mr. H. And so, I was curious, did he give any indication, what sort of impact that would have on the center and their services, if we couldn't reach the two sixty-nine?
What he told me was, I believe, they rent a, or lease a building from the city, correct? And they had plans, yeah.
He told me that.
This is what he told me. And they had plans on making some more beds, if you will, or, or accessing another part of the building to have more beds. But he said, we could get by with the two sixty-nine, and that would keep our program where we're able to help the police and the youth in the community. He said it wouldn't allow us to do any expansion right now, but it would at least allow us to continue to operate with what we currently have in place. Go ahead.
The implication being that they would have to reduce bed count if they didn't get the two sixty-nine?
So, so right now, they were looking to expand. They have another area where there's housing, where they were going to do a, a specific program, especially for kids.
Talking about the group home?
It's not, they have their group home, but they also have another area where they were going to expand into another programming area for housing. And so, I think they were going to do that. I think minus the, the funding coming, that they weren't going to get the full four hundred thousand, they were going to be unable to expand into their other, their area that they wanted.
And if they don't get the two sixty-nine at a minimum, they can't continue the program the way it is right now, and the way that they're serving the community and the police department. Amber?
So, I'm, I'm a little bit torn on if it's, if that's the right strategy, to take just an equal cut. I, I mean, I feel, this is, it's not a good situation. So, I mean, we spent hours and hours and hours on this, and felt pretty good about where we landed. So, but I would say, if we did decide to go that, I think the cut is going to have to be higher, because I believe that if the Salvation Army application had been in front of us, that we would, if we awarded them twenty-five thousand dollars right now, that's only ten percent of their ask. And I think we would have awarded more of it, had it been in the mix with everything else. So, I'm not sure that quite gets us to fair.
Well, may I say that, and I agree with you, that, that was, we worked our tails off that night to get that money. But what I will tell you, at the end of the day, is if they're getting nine dollars out of every ten that we originally planned to give them, I'm really comfortable with that. So, even if we went with a ten percent break, I'm okay with it. I mean, there were some groups that we were fully funding to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars. And if we give them ninety, I'm okay with that. I am. I, it just feels good to me, because then everybody's still getting exactly what we wanted them to have. And, you know, we're not the only funding source. There are other funding sources they have. They've got grants. They've got the county. They've got, there are other ways around this. When we only have two point two-four out of five point eight to give, I don't know, that's just, that's where I feel like it would be a win for everybody, rather than cut an entire program from somebody. That's just a thought. Because we did, we put a tremendous amount of work in there. And I, I know, you know, if we can give somebody nine out of every ten dollars, that's, that's a win for me. Go ahead, Steve.
That's why I was liking, whether it's five, or whether it's my three point seven. But that's kind of where I was coming from, is that you guys have spent a lot of time coming up with this spreadsheet. And if we're really trying to give the Youth Crisis Center to their two sixty-nine, then, to me, as you said, you're still giving them ninety-seven percent of what you had originally allocated.
If we were to do the ten percent?
Do what?
If we were to do ten percent, that would give, that would give the Youth Crisis Center what they need, and it would leave a hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars to the Salvation Army, which is still going to be quite a bit less than their ask. But-
Again, they were looking at expanding programs versus youth cri, and duplicating programs versus youth crisis maintaining.
True. And let's not forget, that's not all they do. Salvation Army feeds and takes care of a whole lot of our homelessness in this community, which is one of our goals. They're, they're not just an expansion group. They're also, they do a lot more for our homeless community than, than just about anybody. Go ahead.
Thanks, Bruce. And I appreciate you making that point. I wish I would have taken the opportunity to connect with the Salvation Army folks before this meeting. But on that point I had brought up at our last meeting, that I felt like the things outlined in their application, to me, it felt like a duplication of services in many regards. You know, they talk about housing assistance. Casper Housing Authority and Community Action do that. Eviction Prevention Service- Eviction Prevention Services, those agencies do that. Utility Assistance Interfaith and other agencies do that. Transitional Living, we gave money to the Hope House for men doing that. Workforce Development Classes and, you know, stabilization for women coming out of prison. There's Klein Wyoming. And so my issue with this application is that there's a lot of things listed that, in my opinion, appear to be a duplication of services for many of the organizations that we've already awarded funding for. And so that's my issue with it, especially the mention of the expanding into like housing assistance and stuff like that. I feel like there's already entities doing a pretty good job of that. And so I'm not a huge fan of splitting those pools of funding across multiple agencies. I would love to actually see more centralization of some of these services in our community. I think we are spread pretty thin amongst nonprofits, and we do have some nonprofits that are duplicating services. And, you know, that's my issue with the application, for what it's worth.
Can you tell me what, anybody have a calculator in front of them? Because I hate to keep borrowing Carter's. Can you tell me what three percent, three percent, or two point five percent of two million, two hundred and fifty thousand is? Two point five percent? Oh, I thought you were doing it. Anybody?
Steve's doing it.
Well, Steve?
How much?
Two and a half percent.
Two million, two hundred and fifty thousand times two and a half percent.
Fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifty-six, two fifty. Eighty-seven, five-fourteen. Am I right?
You're short.
Thirteen, carry the one. Fifteen.
You're short by about twenty-eight thousand, off the top of my head. That's why I came up with three point six-six percent, is I did exactly that.
The first thing we need to do, before we decide how much money we need, are we wanting to fund any amount to the Salvation Army? It's obvious we're going to fund the Youth Crisis Center, that we want to. Am I correct in that? Okay. Are we wanting to fund any or all of the Salvation Army's ask? That's the only other question on the table. Sir?
It would, it would be nice if we could give them some funding. I'm not saying, you know, everybody on the board that we came up with didn't get everything that they wanted, right?
Correct. Well, some did.
Yeah, some did, but I mean, for the majority of them, you know, they just, they got that. So it'd be nice to be able to, even though, you know, it sounds like they got their application in on time. So it'd be nice. I don't know if it's going to get to anywhere where they need to be, but it would be nice to be able to do that.
Well, we've got, we've got two options that I see then, in that case, if that's the way we want to go. If we do a five percent across-the-board cut, that gives us the funding for the Youth Crisis Center to the two sixty-nine. That leaves us approximately twenty-five thousand dollars that we can give to the Salvation Army. That's, that's one. Or two, we can do a ten percent across-the-board cut, give the Youth Crisis Center what they need, and that would leave us a hundred and forty-three thousand, roughly, to give to the Salvation Army. And by the way, those calculations include that eighty-seven thousand dollars. Go ahead.
So there are some of those applications that we had that had smaller amounts that we were helping. So if you cut them, I mean, like the boxing van or something comes to mind, right? And so if you cut them, then they can't even get the van?
That's not necessarily true, because let's say their ask was for twenty-one thousand dollars, and we cut them five percent. They're only losing a thousand bucks. They got to work, and maybe they have to go out and do a little fundraising for a thousand dollars to buy a van that we're funding fully. I don't have a problem with that.
No, it was just the argument that we had when we were trying to discuss.
So I, I mean, that's why I said, if it's a cut across the board, I'll bet you they still find a way to get their van. So for a thousand bucks, either that or they find a cheaper van. I mean, there's, you know what I mean? So we just can't solve the world's problems, five point eight million dollars' worth of the world's problems with only two point two-five million dollars. So we've got to, something's got to give. And it's very unfortunate. Go ahead, Kyle.
Thanks. I personally would be opposed to the ten percent. I think that's too much relative to the other asks. And again, as I'm rereading this application, there's just things that I'm not loving. You know, describe how funds requested from this one cent cycle would be used as we look to provide more permanent transitional housing services and programs. This funding would permit us to meet those requirements and further expand those facilities. There's already entities doing that, and they do a very good job of it. And so the duplication of services is a big issue for me with this one. I understand the vice mayor's point about trying to give everybody a little something, but I might push back on that a little bit and say that maybe that's why we have so many nonprofits that are doing some similar things, is we haven't felt that crunch where there was this pressure to consolidate and centralize services. And I don't know, I feel like maybe this is a good opportunity to make that change in our community, which I think is inevitable. And I feel like people in the nonprofit community, it's kind of the elephant in the room. I feel like people would agree with me, even if they don't feel comfortable saying it in a public forum, but.
All right, do me a favor. Go ahead, Randy.
I will agree with Kyle on this one. It's not, I feel like if we're going to give our one cent money, we should be doing it to more local companies. I mean, the Salvation Army is national. It's not just us, whereas the Hope Center or our Senior Center, it's us. They're getting their money from us and our community. So I'm hesitant to go with, let's give it all to the Salvation Army, especially when we were like, well, the Boys and Girls Club, they're big, they've got help. We didn't fund them. I think this is just going to be another one that I would vote that that money would be better served for some of these smaller places.
Okay, so if we take that ideology and take the hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that we need to get to Crisis Center where they need to be, and we give them the eighty-seven, five-fourteen, that would leave us with a total of eighty-one thousand, four eighty-six. I need a proposal of how we get to that. One sixty-nine. Yeah, because we already, we already gave them a hundred. Yep, so, so I, we need to come up with eighty-one thousand, eighty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars approximately.
Roughly three point seven percent across the board.
Do we want to look at the ones we fully funded? There are ones like this skeet, we gave them fifteen thousand, so giving them less doesn't seem superbly helpful. So maybe we'll look at the ones that are fully funded, and we say, okay, well, what if we whittle it away from here? You know, start this process.
Even with them, we give them fifteen thousand. If we take a three percent cut, three percent of fifteen thousand is what? Four hundred and, four hundred and fifty bucks, something like that? They could certainly figure out a way to come up with four hundred and fifty bucks to facilitate their gate facility, in my opinion. So, just like anybody else can. So if we take two million, two fifty, is it two million, two fifty, or two million, two twenty-five?
Two twenty-five.
Quarter. Two million, two fifty. Like Steve said, and take that even times three percent. Sixty-seven, five, we're still short, so. Four percent? We're just better off doing it that way.
Three and a half percent. How much are you short at three and a half percent?
We're still short for forty-five hundred bucks, roughly. So we just do a four percent?
Can I, can I propose that we don't take an additional four percent from the library? If we're going to take, if we're taking the eighty-seven, that we not take an additional four percent off their two forty?
Fair enough. So if we just do, not twenty million, if we just do two million then, because we gave them roughly a quarter, times four percent, that puts us at eighty grand. That leaves us fourteen hundred and eighty-six bucks short.
I think that's nickel triple.
I think that's close enough. So if you guys are okay with where we're at, what it sounds like, we'll take the eighty-seven, five-fourteen, give that to the Youth Crisis Center. We'll take a four percent cut across the board, excluding the library, and apply that to the Youth Crisis Center, and we're done here. Which means we are giving nothing to the Salvation Army, and that's where we're at. So if that's amenable, we'll take a thumbs up.
My thumbs up is up for that, but it's down for not funding Salvation Army, because I think they're a critical aspect of what they do for Nitrona County. They may be a national organization, but they serve Nitrona County. And while there are some duplication of services, it's shared services that happen, especially with the homeless, that is something that's critically needed in our community. So I think that needs to be made. Keep talking, we need to fight and figure out homelessness. They're head-on with that as well, so. So I think we need to figure that out if we're
It is, it's very unfortunate. And I do think we need to keep this in mind next year, or well, in four years, when the one cent comes back around, we need to keep in mind those that got left behind. You know, it's just unfortunate, we just don't have enough money for everybody. I do share your sentiment. I think, had we known about the Salvation Army upfront, I think we probably would have found some funding for them. This is a very unfortunate situation. But I also understand Kyle's point, and, you know, we can only have so many duplications of services before it gets so thinned out that nobody's getting service. And so we've got to be cognizant of that as well. So I appreciate all your efforts. This is tough stuff. And, go ahead, Steve.
Go ahead and finish your statement.
I'm done. I just, I appreciate the work, the body of work that comes from here. I've been involved a bit from the other side. I've been down at SLIB and watched them have to delve out, you know, a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars' worth of ass with only seventy-five million in the pot. And it's, it's just a tough situation, and you're not going to please everybody. You know, it's just tough. So I appreciate your hard work.
What I was going to suggest is, as you stated, that in four years, we had already carved out, like, for a community action partnership. Is that right? No, child advocacy project, I'm sorry. It was already part of our general fund budget. They didn't have to come and apply through this. And we put money in there for the NIC. But by the same token, I guess what I'm getting at is the police department uses the child advocacy project in the same manner that they use the Youth Crisis Center. So maybe we should be looking as well at some of these that are really, really tied like this into our city organization, that we take them out of this, this pool and start figuring out how to allocate in our normal budget where the funds come from.
I think that's a fair point. I know when we're running, and I'm speaking to last year's hundred and fifty-seven million dollar budget, I can't speak to it because I don't do the financials, but, you know, there's only so much money even there. So, but I do understand your point. Mr. City Manager, you had a comment?
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, just to be very, very clear, the general fund does not fund any social service agency at all. The only one that comes close would be the Health Department and their County Department. Now, we do have other one-cent allocations that go to other nonprofit partners. But zero general fund dollars are allocated towards nonprofit agencies.
And I, and I, you are correct, and I misspoke. But we did, when we originally looked at the one-cent funding, is we set those things out separately from this particular process. And so I guess that's, that's what I was getting at, is we may want to look at those more closely as to where they really fit into our organization. And even though they are nonprofits, they are, they are way more tied to our community and the operations of the Police Department and things along those lines and what some of these are. And separate, separate those out.
When coming into a new budget year, you know, a lot of these nonprofits will be able to, fortunately, have time still to hopefully apply for some grants and find some other avenues of funding. You know, our taxpayers are, they expect this diligence, and I'm sure they're thankful for it. And so all I can say is thank you, and let's, we've got our thumbs up, so let's move on to fiscal year 2023, 2024 proposed budget summary, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. You're going to save some time here. We are taking the obligatory step to present to you the budget summary. And I say obligatory because statutes require this step to happen. We have zero analysis that we're prepared to give you tonight. That is coming on May twenty-three. But in order to keep up with the statutes, you have that summary, and we've met that step. Do you mind if I add an opportunity for Ms. Johnson here, in the event that she needs anything else to add?
Not at all.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselors. I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Thank you. And keep in mind, there is a, the obligatory, what he's talking about is in your packet. I reviewed it today. You can kind of run through and get a rough idea of where the numbers are falling. And I'm sure you'll have questions. So on the twenty-third, when that becomes more prevalent in front of us, that'll be the time to ask those questions. So with that said, we are going to move right on to classification and compensation study follow-up. This was a follow-up that was asked by counsel. This would be your Graves study and the way that we pay our employees, which was in your packet. And with that, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. You're exactly right. Counselor, you know, a few questions as it relates to the Graves study. Staff committed to bring you back kind of a review, if you will, of that study. And that's the purpose of this item tonight, to give you a sort of a broad review, to give you the opportunity to ask any questions. And certainly, if you have, you know, other homework items that we may not be prepared with tonight, we're happy to follow up in that regard as well. And so without further ado, if I could turn time to Ms. Belsa to walk us through that?
Yes, sir.
She'll follow a lot along the lines of what you saw in your memo, but please feel free to ask any questions that you have at all.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about this fascinating topic. Before I get started, I want to introduce Heidi Rude. She's our HR Generalist, so she is integral, an integral part of maintaining our classification compensation system, as well as Nicole Carlson, who is on a European vacation, who couldn't be with us.
Lucky.
Yeah. So there's a lot of details in the packet that I provided. So I'm going to just high-level overview. The Graves study is something we did an RFP to get proposals to conduct the study. And then we actually had the results of the study in 2020. So the first, the first phase that we implemented was in July of 2020, then, and pretty much not much of financial impact at that time. The following July is when we actually placed positions on the Graves pay scale. And there was eighteen, I believe it was about eighteen employees that were below the minimum of the pay scale, so they were brought up to be at the minimum of the pay scale at that time. And then our third phase was January of 2022, and that's where we did some analysis on the compression with supervisors and employees and gave a wage adjustment at that time. The biggest differences that I wanted to point out with our previous plan, that we had had, we found the need that, it was a proprietary system that we had paid for that system. The consultants that did that system retired and left us with no tools to maintain that system. So we knew we had to go to a new system. In that system, there were five steps in each pay grade, and then you would, employees would automatically get a five percent increase each step until they were maxed out at the fifth step. And we had about fifty-three percent of our employees that were maxed out at that fifth step. So with the Graves plan, we have a wider range. I think it was like thirty to forty percent, forty percent, thirty-five to forty percent of the width of each grade. So it allows more flexibility and movement throughout that without getting, you know, the majority of our employees maxed out quickly, so to speak. And it has a mid, a minimum, a mid, and a max of the pay grade. So again, that allows that flexibility without just giving the automatic five percent increase each time. So it's more sensible and realistic as far as a sustainable compensation plan, a classification plan. So that was one of the things that we decided to do, to go with the Graves plan. Now, I will let everybody know, I'm sure you've already read it in your packet, that the police are on a step system, and that's their paramilitary. And so our consultant did recommend that we keep them on a step system. It's not the automatic five percent each year in five steps. There's, I believe it's seven steps, and it's five percent, five percent, five percent, four percent, three percent, three percent, I believe, is the structure for the recommended increase. But that's not recommended increase. But that's not, um, something, if we can't afford that, then, you know, we don't have to automatically do that where the other, um, system we have is pretty much implied that we get a 5% increase. So, uh, there's a difference there. Also, wanted to point out that our local 904, that's, uh, they're covered on the CBA. And so they're on the, the old pay scale, um, where the consultant retired, they're, that, they're still on that pay scale. So that's the differences of the three existing systems that we have right now. Um, but this study, the Graves study, is a statistically validated study. So, um, I will tell you, everybody has their own expertise in compensation, and they go and pick different, you know, well, we want to compare ourselves to these people or these people. This was something, the reason the cost was, um, so expensive for this study is because it is validated, right? So, that's why we, we trust the, the experts to do this study for us and paid them accordingly. So, that's a, a big point I wanted to make, because we do have employees, we do have supervisors, we do have community members that say, oh, well, if you compare yourselves to the school district or this or, and it's not statistically valid. So that's, I wanted to point that out. Um, so the last point I wanted to make was just that we will put it in the budget for fiscal year 25. The consultant recommends that we do a compensation study every three to five years. So we will be due to do a compensation study. Um, I wouldn't recommend that we do a whole overhaul classification compensation study like we did to get on Graves. I think it, it does work pretty nicely. Uh, the compensation piece is just to make sure that we're market competitive. So that's what we would put in the fiscal year 25 budget. A brief overview.
And I might add, I, I did the math today. I was going through this as I was doing a million other things. And one of the things I don't hear anymore, and maybe it's just because I'm removed, but I don't hear complaints about pay within our employees anymore like we used to. And I, so I went back and I started looking through this, and it's, it looks, if my math is correct, over the last, uh, three years, our employees have received uh, over a 20% between their COLA and their raises, they've received over 20% compensation package plus a one-time hit of almost a thousand dollars. And so I think that this particular council and the one right before it that I was on has done a fantastic job of making sure that our people know their value and that they're being compensated for those values, because you just don't hear the grumbling anymore. So to me, that's, that tells me we're doing a good job. I think. Hmm? Do you think that that's, that's a correct assertion, or?
Mr. Mayor, uh, councilors, I, I would agree that council has really tried to take a critical look at, at cost of living issues that we've had in the last couple of years. We've tried to stick to the plan as far as giving, uh, wage increases within the, the band that's allocated. Um, I have not done the math to determine whether or not it's 20% or not, but I, I do know that, uh, over, over time, uh, council's been really helpful to help us try to keep pace as best as possible.
Well, the reason I bring that up more than anything is because I, being a businessman myself, and looking into the future a little bit, and I do see, hopefully not a depression, but I do, I damn sure see a recession coming our way. And I think what's going to happen is we're going to get into a point where we're going to have to wage freeze at some point, uh, in order to cohabitate as a municipality, because I, it's, I think it's inevitable. Um, and so I guess I just wanted to put that out there, that if we go through a specific amount of time, because we just don't have the funds, uh, hang in there, we've proven that when the funds are there, we take care of our people. So I just wanted to make sure that that got said, because I don't want to wait until we have to say, we're on a pay freeze for, for the next fiscal year, and everybody go, oh, you know, let's not forget about the previous three years where we, we were able to add 20% into those salaries. Because I think, I, I really do think it's coming, and I just want to preempt a little, if you will. So Lisa, you had something?
Yes. Are you done?
I am.
So I guess when we went change systems to the Graves, I was under the understanding that we were getting rid of all the other systems and going straight to Graves. So are we going to be doing that, or is it, or you're going to always have the three different systems?
Counselor, it's an excellent question. Uh, if I had it my way, we would all be on Graves. Our collective bargaining agreement is what dictates. They're the only ones that are on the old system. Um, so it's a negotiated item with the local 904.
Did I answer that correctly?
No.
So when we do the, um, fiscal year 25, uh, market analysis, is that when we might expect to see something like the ranges shift, uh, one way or the other? Is that typically the result of an analysis like that? Like you see for a certain job category, things move one direction or another?
Counselor, that is correct. Um, with the COLA, the COLA is the good thing that, when you're gracious and you give the COLAs, then it adjusts the whole pay scale, you know, so it elongates the grades, if you will. Um, depending on the market, it might come back that some, right, some positions get a certain percent and others don't. It's more market competitive. So, depends on what grades, not necessarily all grades. Yeah.
But those grades don't work in reverse. We don't get to take money back from somebody.
This organization has not done that in my tenure.
Not, not a good idea.
No, they'd be, huh? Anybody else have any questions for Tracy? No? Kyle?
I guess the only question I have, uh, it looks like we post, when we're trying to recruit new employees, it looks like we post the range in our job listings, the full range.
Yes.
Which I appreciate. As somebody who's looked for multiple jobs, uh, past five years, I hate the lack of transparency. So I'm glad to see what we're doing.
And I would say, if I could say just, um, you know, there's pros and cons to that too. It's good, but typically people want to start at the, the high end. And, you know, our goal is to start at the, the minimum or no higher than the mid. And so sometimes that's why I think we have about 12% that are at the max now, or we had 53%. So that's still good. But that's part of the reason why we have, we don't want them to get maxed out, right? And then there's no room for them to go, so.
Good point. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay. We'll move on to low-income water assistance program. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we've, uh, councilors, we've had a couple folks here working on this. Certainly, uh, Ms. Johnson's office has been, uh, one that sort of ran point on this initially, and then she sought the assistance of the attorney's office to, to wade through some of the agreements that the state requires in order to sign up to this program and provide this, uh, opportunity, if you will, for those who may qualify. Um, pursuant to that analysis, the attorney has some, uh, points that he would like to share with you tonight to determine whether or not council would like to move in this direction, ultimately, which is, uh, why you see direction requested as a part of this analysis. Uh, if council needs more homework done, however, and would like to, you know, defer direction, that too is available as an option for you as well. Uh, but without further ado, Mr. Mayor, if I could turn the time over to our city attorney.
Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I'll, uh, try to be as brief as I can while still answering, uh, any questions that you all have. But, uh, as our city manager stated, uh, the LEWAP program is a program that's been instituted, um, by the Department of Family Services to help low-income folks with their water and wastewater bills. Uh, this was funded primarily through federal dollars allocated through the ARPA Act of 2021 and the General Consolidated Appropriations Act of, of the same year. Uh, there's approximately 1.6, 1.7 million dollars that was allocated. Um, in order to participate, uh, in this program, uh, we were provided with basically a six-page document, uh, entitled Provider Rights and Responsibilities that we would have to sign off on. And, um, as my deputy reviewed this, he noted several items of concern. Uh, and those are within the memo that has been disseminated. And I'll just walk through some of those, um, concerns very briefly. Um, the first one is that the, within the, the, uh, agreement, there's an affirmative notification duty on the part of the city if, if the recipient were to, to move, um, or, um, not, no longer resided at that address. You know, there, there really isn't a legal prohibition to agreeing to that. It's really more of an operational issue as to whether or not we have that information. Um, but, so that is certainly would be, be a concern. Um, there was a concern in, in reading the, uh, document about potential non-reimbursable charges. Um, I would say that the document presented is very poorly drafted. Um, there's two separate programs. There's a, a separate program called, uh, LEAP, um, which has to do with, uh, energy. And so the, the document itself is a little bit, uh, vague, I think. But, uh, as I read through the document, it, it does seem to me that in a LEWAP program, that disconnection, reconnection charges, um, can be reimbursed, whereas in the, in the energy program, they cannot. So, so I don't know that there's a lot of risk there. Um, so obviously, this has got a finite amount of funding. And so one item that was noted is that, you know, if the funding availability dries up, then the city may have entered into service agreements with individuals and no longer have a, uh, recourse for, for payment. Um, there is, uh, provision in page four that, that states that the state will, at its earliest convenience, let the providers know that, uh, funding may be, um, drying up. Essentially, it's very vague, uh, again, so that, that there is some risk to that. It's hard to quantify it, um, exactly. Um, there is some concern with, uh, a document destruction. Um, in re, uh, reviewing this proposal, I think it's just inartful, um, uh, drafting. Uh, there's a provision in there that says, uh, previous, uh, applications won't be accepted, so just destroy them. Um, I don't think that's a mandate. I think we can still be compliant with our, our retention schedules, but I think what I'm saying basically is they're, they're not going to consider them. Um, the contract requires, uh, the city to release information at DFS, and so there was some concern that the information that was collected, um, it may be private, and we don't have a release. Um, so a couple of things. Uh, there's one part of the, the contract that talks about needing that information for statistical analysis. I think, under the Public Records Act, uh, there is, uh, as long as certain, uh, personal identifying information is scrubbed, that can be provided. Um, the other, uh, item is in the application that the homeowner would, uh, submit. Uh, there is essentially a release. Now, it's unclear to me whether or not we would actually have a copy of that, um, but that, that I think would ameliorate a little bit of the, the concern. Um, finally, indemnification, so that the indemnification language in this document is not great. Um, it doesn't reserve, uh, governmental immunity for the city with, that we'd like to see. Um, it, uh, there's some concern with the indemnification language, um, running afoul of Article 16, Section 6 of the, the Wyoming Constitution. When I read it, it's really basically saying, we're going to indemnify the state for any of our own liability. So I would have frankly more concern if we were going to indemnify them against their own actions, which then I think clearly would run afoul of it. Um, so I, I, I think there is some, some residual risk there, but, but it's not great. Um, when we reached out to the state and asked them to make some of these fairly minor changes, um, they were reticent to do so. It's on an annual basis. They didn't want to make any changes kind of midstream, because that's kind of where we're at. Um, and although what they did inform us is that, well, in practice, they'll try to address some of these things. So really, you know, to the extent that you have concerns about some of these items, um, you've got the state saying, well, we're going to do something differently than what's in the agreement, and so how much can you trust them? And, and just knowing that if push comes to shove, the written agreement is going to, to control. Um, I did get on their website and look. It, it appears to me at this point, uh, there's about eighty-six, uh, different entities throughout the state that are participating, um, in this, uh, program. Um, the vast majority of them are, uh, cities and towns, so municipalities, so, um, including, um, Buffalo, Douglas, Evanston, Gillette, uh, Laramie, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, certainly, uh, a lot of municipalities have weighed the risks and decided to, to move forward with it. I mean, it does provide for some of our lower-income residents, uh, help, uh, with these utility payments. Uh, but again, I, I can't say that there's zero risk with it. Um, but that's, so that's basically my, my analysis. And I guess I'd add, answer any questions if anybody has.
I would, I guess the first comment would be, and Carter, this is more for you, but because you've been through this with Eric, this is going to provide cheaper water for our, our, uh, lower-income residents. And the rest of the city are essentially negligible to where you feel like this is something we should probably do to help them. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilors, I, I think it would be a program that would be appreciated by your citizenry and our, our ratepayers, if you will. Uh, there, there certainly is a narrow band of folks who would be eligible for this type of program anyway. And, uh, my guess is it would offer some much-needed help with respect to the, the benefits that this offers. And so, you know, beyond that, I'd, I'd say, yeah, I, I think I'd recommend moving forward.
And it's very similar, just for the public, it's very similar to the gas, um, program that's available and the electricity program that's available to those particular client, uh, citizens. Uh, somewhat, I mean, maybe not the same, but similar to helping them uh, get through their utility bills and things like that.
I, I think the objective is very similar.
Okay. Thank you. Kyle?
Thanks, Bruce. And thanks, Carter. Um, my question is, I, I'm not familiar with LEWAP. I'm very familiar with LEAP. Uh, it's a program I helped a lot of people apply for when I was a case manager at the Counseling Center. So my question is, um, are these programs all being lumped together, or are we talking about adding the Low Income Home Water Assistance Program in addition to the LEAP program that we've already been supporting? I guess I'm, I'm curious if this is a change from how we've handled, uh, programs like LEAP in the past, or if, since you've come on board as city attorney, you've identified these are some areas that maybe require some cleanup? Uh, I guess that's what I'm curious.
Mayor, Councilor Gamroth, it is a separate program. It's jointly administered by DFS. And I think their, their paperwork essentially for us to sign up, they kind of lump it together. And so, um, you know, particularly when there's federal funding involved, I, I usually tend to see a little more robust agreement. Um, a lot of your kind of boilerplate language that, you know, you're going to comply with certain federal regulations. It's just, you know, for, to, to be perfectly candid, it's just not very well-written. But, um, but yeah, it is, it is very similar to the LEAP program. I think this is, um, focused more towards, you know, water and wastewater. And, and looking at the, the website, they're going to prioritize those households that are in danger of being cut off, um, or being disconnected. And then secondarily, to, you know, reduce, uh, water rates for those of low income. So, so yeah, I think it's, it's probably, you know, fresh set of eyes to, you know, looking at this, identifying some things. And certainly, you know, if, if we can, uh, get their attention maybe at, uh, in September, October, when the new year kind of rolls over, because you have to re-enroll on an annual basis, uh, maybe we'll have a little more traction with, you know, negotiating some, some better language.
If you can follow up on that.
Please.
Thanks. Um, uh, sort of an aside, in our, our utility bills, do we have any sort of asterisk or note that, uh, if folks are struggling with their energy bills? Or, well, I guess we're not in the energy business. Uh, but I wonder if our, our city water bills, if we would have some sort of disclaimer like, this program is available, if you're struggling with your bills, here's how you access it, kind of thing. Uh, because I know, how many, how many, um, utility obligations did we write off here in the last year? It was a lot. It was like a quarter million dollars or something like that, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, counselor, and I would say we're always working and trying to reduce that, that, uh, you know, that financial burden to the, to the ratepayers. But do you mind if I defer to Jill?
Not at all.
More specific detail?
Not at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselor. We actually do not have something on the utility bill that specifically states if you cannot pay your bill, call us. But we hope that people would call us. Um, if we do not receive a call from them, as we get ready to, um, do the collection process, we do reach out to the citizen frequently in order to, um, hopefully connect with them with some resources that they can utilize.
One last follow-up. And would the intent be that, uh, when we've started this collection process, would we be referring people to a program such as this if they require that assistance?
Uh, we usually ask the customer if they would like information on other resources. And if they say yes, we actually have not only this program, if you guys approve it tonight, but we have other resources as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kathy?
What's going to be our cost doing business?
And that's a fair question. Uh, do you mind, again, if I defer to Jill?
No, please.
Mayor, Counselor, I don't know that I have the cost of doing business. You wanted to find that a little bit better for me.
What's it going to cost the city in manpower to monitor this and administer this program?
So we would manage this program with our current staffing. There would be no additional cost. We would put some procedures in place to make sure that we are, um, complying with the requirements of the program.
Lisa?
That was the question I was going to.
Oh, okay. Well, he had his finger up first, so I'm just going in order here, sorry. Randy?
Okay, so if we, they run out of funding, say mid-year, we've got that thirty-day window or however long it takes, are we allowed? or however long it takes, are we allowed to go after the person in the house for that balance? Or are we agreeing that they were in the program and we are going to write that off?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilor Haskins, yeah, I think we still have recourse to collect. The flip side is actually addressed. It says if they end up overpaying, then the folks can keep the money and that they don't have to pay it back to the state. So I think that the concern was is that if we might provide utility service, water service, to somebody based on the fact that, well, they're in this program and then it dries up, would we have made that same decision as the program, right? So, yeah, I mean, there's some downside, but I don't think it ties our hands in terms of, you know, any additional steps to collect or, you know, terminate service if it comes to that. I think we can follow our standard operating procedures.
Any other questions? Okay, it seems to me that this is a win for our citizenry with little to no risk to the city, really. So I would ask you for a thumbs up to move this forward. Okay, if you have it. Easy enough. Thank you all very much. Jill, thank you, and Eric, thank you. Let's move on to the big five-minute urban forestry grant. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. We have the opportunity to consider a grant that we believe would benefit our urban forestry efforts. We have a couple of our urban forest experts here, Katie and Randy, to walk us through what this means and what this would require, if you don't mind my turning that time over.
Not even a bit. All right. Katie?
Mayor, Counselor, or I'm sorry, Mayor, Council. Park staff is requesting council support to apply for a USDA Forest Service grant to help meet the established priorities of the City of Casper Urban Forestry Section, including updating the city-owned tree inventory and condition assessment, removal of high-risk trees to protect human life and property. Much of this existing damage is still from twenty-four degrees storm Atlas. Believe it or not, we still have a lot of trees that are in poor condition from that storm. Improve maintenance of the existing urban forests to meet tree health and meet code ordinance requirements. Planting and maintenance of new trees to increase the tree canopy and diversify the urban forest for improved health. Work in hiring, training, and certification of existing and new staff to develop and expand the number of city arborists, and offer education to the community regarding tree planting and tree healthcare. The financial considerations for this would be, we would be requesting up to $500,000 from the USDA Forest Service. The grant is a one-to-one match. This equates to a $1 million investment in urban forestry over the next five years. Existing staff, equipment, and operating budgets for FY24 and beyond will be used as cash and in-kind match for the grant. In addition, the FY24 budget includes a request for an inventory and assessment of trees on city-owned property. These budgeted dollars can also be used as matching funds. Funding agreements are for five years, so all of the work would need to be moved on in five years. Any questions from you all?
So it sounds like we already have the money in the bank.
Well, Mr. Mayor, councilors, I...
Our end of it, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that is a fair assessment in that we do have quite a bit of liberty with regard to how we provide the match. And as Ms. Halick explained, that can be budgets that we've already put together, that can be additional staff time that may be outside of that. There's a lot of ways that we can minimize the amount of money, even in the best-case scenario, if we get a full $500,000 allocation. So I feel very confident that the actual out-of-pocket cash being needed to match whatever it is that we would be awarded would be fairly minimal.
Any questions, comments? Can I get a thumbs up? You have a question, Jenna?
No, I just want to say that I love this program and because of, I love trees, and we do need them. And you remember that storm did take out quite a bit, and City Park is one of them, that they're still trying to plant some things in there. And just if you look around in the big tree area, we need to keep on bringing some trees and planting them, right?
Right.
We need it.
Are we good to go? All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Sorry you had to sit here for all that. But we appreciate you.
Plant those trees.
Agenda review, which is going to include the open container, which you should have a copy of this in your packet. This is identical to the one that we approved last year. And we're hoping that, we don't want to expand this or do anything else, that we just want to save with what we've got. But, Carter, why don't you?
Do you want me to leave?
No, I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, believe it or not, we're at that time of year again wherein you have the option of determining whether or not you want to declare an open container area for the, you know, the typical operating season, which is generally between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And generally speaking, this is an area that, as the map would indicate, that would include the OID and the downtown area for the most part. You can see here what it is. It is generally proposed in terms of operating hours as well. And as the mayor suggested, we really don't have any recommendations in terms of changes that would dramatically alter what you have in front of you tonight. Certainly, however, if you have questions, if you want to hear more detail, we're prepared to offer any of that, as much as you'd like to consume. So the time is yours for that purpose?
Okay, I would like to ask Chief, since we have him at our disposal, and we're not asking for a change, to speak to how this worked last year, because we did expand this area for last year. And staff's request is that we keep it where it was. So I'd like to know what your thoughts are as far as how that worked out last year and this prospective year, if you would, please.
You know, before we draw too many conclusions, I still feel compelled to address the fact that, you know, for the last two and a half years, we really haven't had normalcy. So the expansion last year did nothing to harm us. That was, had a negligible impact on us, and I'm not recommending that we contract or expand anything that we're currently doing. What was working last year should work for us this year. Just like last year, this year, we're heading into a season where staffing is going to be an issue for this project. And so we may not be able to fully staff it as we would hope. That would be the only impediment to having this be a successful program is my ability to supply it with the requisite number of police officers. The expansion did not impact us adversely.
Thank you very much. Kyle?
Thanks, Bruce. I'm failing to remember. Chief, could you remind me, the expansion, what did that look like?
Mayor, Counselor, the, generally speaking, we expanded to include Black Tooth and a few other... We just made a more normal attempt at making sure we're inclusive of the businesses that could most benefit from it.
I think we also went further east, I think, a little bit. We went down to Walcott, which wasn't included in the year before. I think it stopped at Center, if I remember right.
I see.
Hang on. Do you have a follow-up?
I did, actually. My understanding was that we included Far West Side, Oak Street, and the adjacent part of Yellowstone Highway, because I believe at that time Pete at the gaslight owned it and was doing some events in the old Stockups RV lot.
Yes.
My understanding is that that ownership has changed, changed hands, and I don't believe the current owners intend on organizing any events or anything. So if there were not going to be concerts and other things like there had been in the past, I would advocate, unless anyone has good reason to keep it, that we reduce Oak Street and the adjacent Yellowstone Highway to bring it back to Elm Street, because I know Bullhorn's going to be doing Rock the Block and stuff, so I'd advocate keeping that. But I don't see any reason to keep Oak Street and that last portion of Yellowstone on the map.
The only reason I would say keep it is, even if we don't use it, if for some reason Pete gets a huge concert in, they will have one over there at Stockups. So it doesn't hurt to keep it. If there's nothing going on there, go ahead, sir.
Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt the flow of the conversation. We are in discussion with, with Mr. Huff on holding a, an event there in the Stockup parking lot. It's undetermined at this point if we're going to try to avail ourselves of that being a participation event in the open container. But I, but in full disclosure, I am in discussions with, with Mr. Huff on an event in that Stockup parking lot.
And if it doesn't happen, then at least we're, they're zoned for it. We don't have to readdress it at that time. Jenna?
I was just going to ask where, just to make sure, because I know that other, like, Skulltree moved down there. I just wanted to know, is that covered? Does that cover them so that they can...
I don't know who Skulltree is or where they are.
Skulltree's over...
I know, it's over there by...
Across from David Street.
Right. Oh, across from David Street. Is that where they went?
I'm going to second location.
Right. That's right, the second location, front of David Street. That's where I was wondering. I'm like, is that in there? Because I wasn't quite sure. Is that my Frosta Tops?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then my other question was, just because there are roads on Elm Street and that Walcott are short, why don't we just make them all go up to Midwest?
I think the reason is there's no establishment up there. I think the one at Walcott actually ends at backwards, and there's no reason to have it go across the parking garage and down into other areas where there's no, no reason for them to be down there with alcohol. There's no establishment to serve them down there. I think that's why. Sir?
Mayor, Counselor, I would reiterate from years past, having this discussion, I've done everything in my power to reduce the footprint, because I have to cover more area, and it takes more bodies to do it. There's no need for, you know, and I just don't have the manpower to patrol effectively those additional areas. And in fact, we're trying to, you know, the purpose of this is to increase and make this enjoyable for the downtown experience and perhaps benefit businesses that are participating. But the lack of participation past those makes it, so I want to, I want to put the brakes on that, because we just can't cover it.
Okay, thank you.
Kyle?
Thanks, Bruce. To that point, that was part of my reasoning for wanting to reduce the area, because my guess is that it reduces the cost at the police department, which I think we estimated at $30,000. My guess also is that the event, you're talking to the business owner down there with, is cruising with the Old East Car Show. Is our open container, it doesn't even begin until four or five in the afternoon, right?
Correct. I think it's five o'clock.
Right, it's right there. So I guess I would just throw that back out there. That's probably the only event I can think of. Maybe Pete has a big concert, but I wonder if the one or two possible events this year could be covered by a special event permit or something along those lines, as opposed to having you have to canvas it all, all summer long.
Sir?
Mayor, Counselor, excellent point. I mean, you know, we have had very forthright conversations with the event organizer on what the possibilities are, what the, you know, who's participating, whether it be, you know, the new occupier of the old Yellowstone Garage, what their level of participation. We don't have these things hammered out. And if council wants to retract this, I'm going to support council's decision all day. You know, I, we did that intentionally for, to facilitate some business planning that was going on, and I have received no word from other organizers that have been mentioned here today on what their plans are this summer. So I can't speak to it one way or the other. I'm here to support council's wishes.
Thanks. Can I have one more follow-up?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks. This maybe Flor is the best one to answer this question, or perhaps the chief as well. But that location, Stockups RV lot, if they got a special event permit, I don't know if that's the right nomenclature, but if they got a permit to do open container on that property, would it allow continuity with the rest of the open container? Or would there be discontinuity in those circumstances?
You remember, Counselor, they could, they could ask for it in that area.
Can you remind me what the cost is of one of those?
It depends on the size of the, for a special event. It would depend on how big of an event it is, because it's that tiered system, so.
What are the highest tiers, if you don't mind my asking?
Carolyn can tell you exactly what those numbers are.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, please. The highest is $50.
Okay.
Lisa?
So, say absolutely nothing is happening on Oak Street, and you know nothing is happening on Oak Street, and it's kind of quiet. Are you guys still patrolling that as frequently as you would Ash Street?
Mayor, Counselor, we fish where the fish are. So what that means is, is I'm obligated to provide services. People are inclined to go where they need to go, where they want to go. And so, you know, if we're not doing anything in here, then I don't need to go past here. But, you know, so the answer to your question is I have to concentrate my resources where they're most needed. We do that strategically, depending upon the calls for service and the actual events that are happening and the individual circumstances we're faced with.
Mr. Napier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, with regard to the special event permit, because I think this is a very interesting vein of conversation here. The event permit requires the organizer of that particular event to provide security and provide oversight and those kinds of things as a feature of being able to handle that event, right?
Your honor, yes. And sometimes insurance can be, we might require them to provide insurance, depending on what event they're having.
Exactly. So, Mr. Mayor, with that in mind, it may warrant retracting the green line back to Elm Street, given that the only time things are going to take place probably throughout that area will be by virtue of some sort of special event and an associated special event permit that has its own requirements and stipulations. And so if we are interested in trying to help the chief have as much efficiency as possible with regard to allocating his resources, I guess I would be an advocate of reducing that, that green line back to Elm Street along the corridor that's already been mentioned.
If in fact we're going to do that, I could see also cutting off at Walcott, because there is no other bar down Second Street, past Walcott. So, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, I was curious why that was included. I don't remember that discussion, so I was curious if anyone...
I don't remember it either, but I was sitting here looking at it going, there's really no reason for that to be there.
Flor, I think she knows.
Was it...
Go ahead, Flor.
Counselor, it was because of the Himalayan, but they have a restaurant, so they can't serve for people to take it out anyway. So it was just what came up, that they had a liquor license, and so we should extend it. So that's why it was.
So if it pleases the council, I say we cut the green line off at Walcott, and we cut it off at Elm, include Elm, but cut it off after Elm for this year, and see how that works out for us. And then in the event there's something going on down there, they can apply for a special permit. Go ahead, Jenna.
I just wanted to make sure, because of the existing conversation that he's already been in, and how far he is along in that...
They could still get a special permit.
...is that going to affect your conversation?
Mayor, Counselor, then, you know, we're still preparing those permits and the specificity of those permits, so it's, there is time still to do that. Mayor, I would like your permission to address that last vein of conversation.
Sure, of course.
The, the original intent of this was not to necessarily advocate for the sale of mobile alcohol. It was, the original intent, as my recall, is to support our downtown businesses. We'd included the Himalayan, not because they can't sell alcohol. We included it so that people were free to walk down and take advantage of our restaurant in that same area. That block is going to be something I'm going to have to patrol anyway, is the normal course of business. It's within our line of sight. I would not advocate for restricting it back, because I'm going to have people trying to walk over there to go attend dinner anyway. So I will defer to council's wisdom on this, but it's, that's not, that is a high-concentration area I got to pay attention to anyway, whereas this is way out there, out of sight, out of mind. So I defer to council's wisdom on this, but I did want to make the point of trying to stay true to our original intent for even starting this program. Otherwise, I'd be ready to get rid of it all.
Fair enough. So with the chief's guidance, then, I would just propose that we... Fair enough. So with the chief's guidance sent, I would just propose that we, we just cut it off at Elm Street and leave the rest of it where it is and, and reevaluate next year, see how we're at. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay, very good. Thank you for your guidance. Yeah, of course you can.
I'm full of them tonight.
I got enough thumbs up, but you're welcome to reopen it if you need.
And I'll give you mine as well. I was just pointing to clarification. I thought the original open container ordinance designated only south and west sidewalks. Do we have any sort of distinction with this one, or is it all sidewalks, north, south, east, west?
Mayor?
Please.
Councillor, it's my recollection that last year we kind of threw in the towel both sides of the street.
Yes, sir.
Because we just wanted to uncomplicate it for our citizens and make it easier for Andrew's team to appropriately sign it.
Agreed. And I will be honest, uh, no offense against Seth or The Void, but I'm glad that that isn't in that open container area. That I feel better about not having a bunch of kids hanging out while there's open containers walking by because that can get misconstrued quite easily. So, anyway, sounds like we've got our plan of action. We'll cut it off at Elm Street, and that'll be that. So is there anything else on agenda review for you, my man?
Mr. Mayor, councillor, the only thing that is on, you know, sort of dominating my mind these days and actually will take a lot of your time over the next few weeks is with regard to budget items. And, and you know that that is happening during the last week of May, and, and that will take up more than just one night that week. I just wanna remind that of council, that indeed we've got a number of issues that will probably bleed over into the 24th. Beyond that, Mr. Mayor, I would certainly recommend council review the final sheet in your grid document in that we'd like to check in with you to make sure we're not missing anything that perhaps council is expecting to see on some future agenda, that this is helpful to us to, to remember to do.
And while you're looking at that, I will remind you, next week, we have our third reading on Westridge, and we have the third reading on the alcohol ordinance. We postponed those last week until we had a full council. We just felt that that was probably appropriate to do. So we will have those coming up next week at our regular council meeting. So is there anything on the future agenda that you are not seeing that you need to see? Because I would imagine a bunch of these will start getting lumped in once we get through budget, and we can start whittling that down. Okay. All right, very good. Legislative review, do you have anything on that, sir?
Do you mind if I turn to Jolene for a second?
Well, my name is.
Mayor, councillor, I thought we would quickly go over where we are with interim topics and WAM resolutions. So we submitted seven interim topics in the spring. They were all sponsored. Unfortunately, they've all been now cut by management, the legislative management, and none of our legislative topics that we submitted for interim are on interim list. After talking with Carter in some length and where WAM is going kind of strategically, our legislature is very different than the legislature that we have had in the past. We're not proposing to submit any WAM resolutions and kind of lay low and hold tight except for the ones that WAM will discuss at summer convention and everybody will agree upon together. Part of the thought is, um, if we're more quiet and we lay low, maybe we won't lose some things that we have gained in the past, if you know what I'm trying to say.
You know what I mean. Sir?
Mr. Mayor, I think the other point that probably warrants being discussed too, albeit briefly, is that this will be a budget session. And so a lot of those items that we would ordinarily want to pursue will require two-thirds to even get, you know, legislative attention anyway. And so I agree with Jolene's assertion. It probably does make sense to, let's follow where WAM goes with some of their resolutions and priorities, and you'll get the opportunity to, to weigh in as those things develop as well. So, um, I think that's what I'd recommend as your manager.
And I will, I will also tell you that we have some folks that are very active in WAM here, and, and they, even they require keeping an eye on every once in a while, an email had came through about how somebody from WAM had recommended going to the legislature with making the fifth cent permanent in the state of Wyoming. And I threw a fit. Your mayor sent a letter to them and said, listen, we only get 21 cents on the dollar on 4% sales tax. On the one cent, our municipality receives 78 cents. So if you're representing the municipality, why would you strip them of 50 cents on the dollar? So I don't think that's going anywhere, but I just want you to be aware that I did send a letter and said, hold on a minute, let's look at this a little more municipality-wise if we could. So, anyway. Anything else?
I don't. Any questions for me?
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Bond, how are you this evening?
I am good, Mayor. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. We're gonna do council around the table, so I thought I would start with you.
Okay, I, let's see. I attended the Senior Center fundraiser last Saturday. Good turnout. I haven't heard a file him out yet, but it was good. Kyle and, and Vice Mayor Pacheco represented us well as jockeys, so they did a great job.
You were a jockey?
They were jockeys.
On what? Like poodles or what? What are you riding?
Night of the races.
How did I miss it?
Ray and Kyle, there has to be, there has to be videos.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Michael.
And other than that, there is a reception at the Nicholas in our museum, Back to Nature, this coming Saturday at 5:30 PM. That exhibit is opening, so we encourage anyone who's available to attend.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you. Mr. Kathy? Nothing tonight?
The only thing I have is, looking at our agendas, I had originally written down that we were gonna have some budget work on that Monday, the 22nd. Is that not going to happen?
Mr. Mayor, councillor, I, I think we could probably afford to take Monday off, but I would suggest Tuesday and Wednesday will definitely be a busy couple of nights.
The reason I was asking is Wednesday I probably wouldn't be here because I need to be in Houston for a grandson's high school graduation. That's why I was asking.
YouTube.
Do what?
YouTube.
Thank you. Anything else to you?
Yeah, no, that is all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Brandy, do you have anything tonight?
I don't have a whole lot. It's Mother's Day weekend. Don't forget. Everybody remember. And I believe Hogdon is doing a Mother's Day brunch.
Oh, nice.
Our SVP though.
Yes, they are.
Reservations required.
That's what I hear.
Understood. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Well, thank you. Ms. Pollock?
I guess the only thing I have, there's a Wyoming Symphony Orchestra concert this weekend. Should be a great time. And speaking of council participation in local fundraising efforts, yours truly is in the race for the podium at Wyoming Symphony Orchestra. So be sure to check out that fundraiser. I think it's the first time that they've done it in this specific format. Very exciting, shaping up to be a tight race among several local community members. So check it out. Hit their concert this weekend. If you haven't had a chance to catch any from this season, it's been fantastic.
When and where? Washington Park, I think, right?
Uh, that'll be their August concert. So this will be, uh, Saturday, 7:30 the regular time, I believe, at NC.
NC. Thank you. Anything else?
I think all my meetings are next week, so you'll have to.
All right. We'll wait till next week. Thank you very much. Lisa?
I do wanna talk about the Westridge improvements. I have been getting so many phone calls and just a lot of people just generally confused. And so, so far, I know about seven people have not received a certified letter and has no clue. And it just feels like there's just so many questions that, that's out there that the general public does not understand or what's happening. And I can't even truly answer. I don't even know why this LED came about. The citizens didn't come to the city and say, hey, let's come together and do this. Plus, we haven't been provided information on how they can opt out. And so that was a, that's a lot of different questions of like, how do we oppose? I have no idea how to tell them how to oppose. And so it's just, so we're, we're telling them 50% of the people, if, if they say they don't want it, then it wouldn't happen. But the people don't even have a clue on how or where that they would say that they don't agree with this project or they don't want it. So it's, I just think that there's still so much information on there that we are not privy to, nor are the citizens. And I just, I am sure that I think that we do need to postpone this vote until, I don't know if we need another town hall meeting or something, or I'm not sure, but I just know that there's so much confusion going on with that whole project. And you have to kind of sift through it because we are getting a lot of citizens that aren't even living in that area that are complaining about it. So, so, but you have to weed down. But I am getting phone calls from people that actually live in that area that, that just generally have no clue of what's happening or even how to even find out that information.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Ms. Jensen?
All righty. Um, I have a couple of things here. So last Thursday was the 120th banquet for the Chamber of Commerce, the annual banquet. So that was very well attended, and we had Silver Fox do the catering for it, and it was fabulous. And we recognized a lot of local businesses, and it was just a fabulous evening. Um, and everybody got to meet Tina, the new Hobel Heinrich, I think I said it right. She is the new CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, so she was there too. Um, I had my event for the open house at the National Historic Trail Center to celebrate National Travel and Tourism Week, and that was really good. So it was great to get some new people in there in a fun way, so see what the center's all about. I attended a DCBA, that means the Downtown Casper Business Association meeting this morning, and they have, they're getting their summer event schedule ready and different things that they have going on. But this Thursday, let's see, 11th, if there is any downtown shop owners that want to explore and see what the DCBA actually is and how you can get involved in that, they're holding a spring breakfast at Old Town Family Fun, and it's catered by Wood and Derek who's down there. So just encourage any shop owners that are down in that downtown area that want to attend to go to that. And Mr. Bond and I attended our first municipal band meeting last week, and that was really good. And it was nice to hear and, and get to know them and develop a relationship on the city side. They have a list of their concerts. They have nine that they're performing, and they're gonna be over again in Washington Park doing that. So keep an eye out. I asked that, talked to Zulima about some of their concerns, so we'll discuss those later. But also, I asked that maybe it be put on our social media or that city app or something and some of the dates that they're playing so that we can get more involvement there too. They're good. And they'll be in the summer parade on a trailer because they don't march.
Very cool.
That's it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Gamroth?
Thanks, Bruce. Uh, David Street Station had their Taco Fest over the weekend. Very successful. They sold 300 tickets pre-sale, and they sold out within 30 minutes, the day of. It was their biggest turnout ever. So congrats to those guys over there. I didn't make it, but I saw the pictures. There was an Oil City article, so it looked like a well-attended event. Uh, thanks to councillor Bond for the shout out about the off to the races. It was a pretty fun night. My horse was a bit quicker than Ray's. Sorry, you can't win them all. So yeah, that was a really fun, different event. That was my first time ever attending, so congrats to Amy in the Senior Services Center for putting that one on. Uh, our Casper Police Department is having their block party next Monday, I believe, from 5 to 7. So.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Oh, geez, it's at, it's during council meeting?
During our meeting. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Who thought of that? So I guess, uh.
Maybe it was intentional.
Chief didn't want to be there.
So feel free to come by, and you can watch our meeting through the windows, I guess. Have a hot dog outside. And then lastly, since councillor Pollock brought up the symphony concerts, I'm a huge fan. A hidden gem, in my opinion, is if you can't afford or you don't like dressing up to go to the evening performance, they do have a dress rehearsal, I think at 11 o'clock in the morning. That's usually what I attend. I have a five-year-old daughter that likes to go but just can't hang tight throughout the whole performance. And so all it is, is like, I think it's $10 a family or donation to Wyoming Food for Thought to get in the door during the dress rehearsal. And it's still a spectacular performance. They take some stuff. They're not dressed up, you know, to the nines, but it's still a very great performance. And so if you got little ones or the evening performance is too expensive or something, I would just encourage you to check out those dress rehearsals. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Second place stick rider, Mr. Vice Mayor?
We each won first place.
Is this where everybody gets a trophy? Is it one of them?
Yeah, I was thinking.
It was a fantastic night. It's, it's good. It's a great cause because Senior Center's just a great place. And my, my parents and my family, my aunts and uncles go quite a bit, so it's something I, I really appreciate. So it was fun to be there and had a good time. Um, the only thing I have is that to get on, the Youth Empowerment Council wanted to come and present to the city of Casper. And so they had reached out to me, and so I said I would get them a time on a pre-meeting possibly. If we can, either a pre-meeting would be nice. I think they only need five, 10 minutes to do a little presentation to talk about YACN, Mercer Family Resource Center. So, see if everybody's okay with that.
Absolutely. Would you mind, uh?
No.
Finding a spot for the kids to come and talk to us?
Absolutely. That'd be great. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. I got a few things. First off, I wanna compliment the council and our gallery last week. Very spirited discussion, very spirited situation, a lot of emotion. Was very respectful, I felt, from all sides. I was very pleased with the dialogue and the way that that went off. So kudos to, to our folks that came to share their feelings with us. I thought it was done just eloquently, to say the, the least. So I was, I was very appreciative of that. I'm gonna address the Westridge LED, and just let the, the folks out there know, I, I don't know of an LED that we have ever done that has been more advertised, had more town halls, had more doors knocked on, and more letters sent than the Westridge LED, LED. So if there's some folks feeling left out, I, I'm sorry, but I will tell you, we, we have worked our tails off to include everyone in that neighborhood. And the reason it came about is because the streets are deteriorated, the sewer is deteriorated, the water lines need replaced. And so when you do that, of course, you have to replace the sidewalks and the gutters, which are the responsibility of the homeowner. So the LED comes in to make it affordable for them rather than just bill them. And there is no way to opt out unless the entire neighborhood votes it down, which has not happened. And so I, there's a lot of neighborhoods in this community, and whether you know this or not, you've already paid for the sidewalk and the gutter in your neighborhood. Whether you bought in a subdivision or whatever, it was built into the cost of the property on the land before the house was ever built. You own that. So that, that's where that cost comes from. The, I guess the upside is you're gonna have new water, new sewer, new streets, new utilities, new sidewalks, new gutters. You're gonna have very nice, and that's a very old neighborhood that is in dire need of an upgrade. That's where it comes from. So it comes from the city doing evaluations on our roads and sewers and deciding where, where to go next. So there's people in line that would love to have that opportunity. That's all I know about that. I read the governor's proclamation on Saturday for the Abate Parade, which I rode in, my wife and I did. There's about 380 bikes, and it went off without a hitch. The police did a fantastic job navigating and getting everybody where they needed to go safely. So that went off well. And that is for child abuse awareness and motorcycle awareness. This is Motorcycle Awareness Week. As the weather starts to get better, there will be more and more bikes, so please watch out for them. I almost got hit three different times today, people doing what I'm guilty of myself, just rolling up to a stop sign, maybe not coming to a complete stop, just giving it the old California glance and going through. And I almost got smacked three different times. So on a bike, it's just scary and it's dangerous. So please be aware that they'll be on the roads. Johnstone Supply is our newest company in Casper. They're a wholesale HVAC supply company who, I attended their ribbon cutting on Thursday, and beautiful building. It's over on. It's over on East Yellowstone, over by Rocky Mountain Power. They bought Lariat Trucking and, and put a two million dollar rebuild into that building, and it's beautiful. The average consumer can't walk in and buy anything. It's, it's wholesale only, but amazing new business. And they put on a heck of a party Thursday night as well, so Black Hawk was here, and it was just good, a lot of fun. Went to, for the public's knowledge, starting June first, our, all of our new city council meetings will be held at the Lyric. We went and toured it today, and pretty cool facility, so, and of course, the public will still be welcome to all our meetings, and there should be plenty of room for everyone Third, next Thursday, or no, excuse me, for, this Friday, we will be blessing our new buses. They would like Counsel to be there if you can. There was an email that went out, I think it's eleven o'clock, and so we'll be welcoming the new buses in and the newest part of our city operation, if you will. And then lastly, last weekend, this next weekend, and probably the next couple of weekends after that, it's graduation weekend, so we will have all of our high school graduates, we will have our Casper College, all the colleges, University of Wyoming, all the colleges around, which tells you that high school graduation is coming as well. So all the kids are going to be out, they're going to be about. We got to start being a little more cognizant of who's on the streets, especially pedestrians because they're everywhere, especially in our downtown. It's really starting to get busy down there, and I'd love to see that. It's good for our downtown businesses, but it also creates a lot of hazards too if we're not paying attention to all the extra foot traffic. So with that said, the next meeting of the Casper City Council will be next Tuesday evening at, pre-meeting will be at 5:30, meeting will be at six o'clock right here in Council Chamber. And did you have anything you need to add?
No, sir.
All right, with that said, have a great evening, everyone. Thank you. And you didn't keep it late, like you said you were going to. I'm so disappointed.
I decided. I decided not to.
I did. I, I took the lead for at least two things.